But I did, I did.
Well, in our place, we didn't do it.
That's good.
So that's something I'm doing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, he goes back to talk. Yeah. Yeah. I think it's very special.
One time I did.
Yeah. Sometimes that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
They think that you keep going.
Yeah. And Donna and I were getting over there too. Want to go through the pledge again? I don't need to go through the pledge again, Lou. Well, I learned to do that. He kind of asked. That's all we everybody.
To do this, they are all. Sometimes it's.
Me, I don't care today. September.
Always in that meeting. But that's a special.
I think it's five.
Okay, okay. We have to hurry up.
Excuse me, I'll call it the order. You just take it from there.
Okay. Ms. Westbrook, regarding the agenda, we do have an addition and a deletion. Under section three, we would like to add number four, request for a public hearing. And under section number two, delete item number one. So we will not have a section two based if the board approves the modified agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda. I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes described by Mr. Dean.
They have a motion to second to approve the agenda. All in favor, raise your hand with the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move along, unanimous consent.
Okay, we're ready to jump into section three, Ms. Westbrook. This is a request to set a public hearing for a second reading and approval of changes to the floodplain management ordinance. And this is basically part of the vision emergency management requirements that we have an ordinance of such. We're asking the commission to approve setting a public hearing.
Offer a motion, chairman, to set a public hearing to this issue on September twenty-third.
Got a second by Mr. Grant Field. You heard the recommendation from the administration now, what's the board's pleasure? Right, the right hand, all of them, okay. Move along, that unanimous consent.
Item number two under this section is request to set a public hearing to adopt subdivision ordinance for compliance with Senate Bill seven eighty-four. We discussed in a previous meeting where the public, the governing body for both the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners would no longer be a part of the approval process because you have a law that already establishes what those requirements are. Asking the board to set a public hearing to adopt this subdivision ordinance.
And just real quick question.
Okay.
Clarification, that is if all of the conditions of the subdivision ordinance are complied with. Otherwise, if it, if it doesn't, then it would come, it would go through the, the same process of going through planning and zoning and then coming to us. Okay.
I'm following. I'm right on up with that, Poot. Thank you.
So the Senate Bill seven eighty-four requires that all subdivision plaques receive approval from an administrative official as appointed by the Board of the County. We have a resolution that will also be coming before you on the twenty-third, if you set the public hearing for them, to name the county administrator as the administrative official. But it will also require signature from the community development director.
Which would be you at this time.
Correct, and Mr. Dean.
And as I understand it, it would not get approved if it didn't meet the requirements.
If it doesn't meet the requirements, it would not receive approval.
Period.
Period, until they amended whatever to.
Till they corrected whatever deficiencies were.
Correct.
With that being said, I'll offer a motion to set a public hearing for the, to adopt subdivision ordinance for compliance of S B seven eighty-four effective seven one twenty-two five at the twenty-third meeting.
Thank you. Well, we have motion and second by Mr. Grant Field. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, unanimous consent. Oh, do we need any more discussion on that, you think?
Actually.
Okay. Move along.
Ms. Westbrook, the next item, number three, under section three, is a request for board approval to set a public hearing for Ring, Ring Road and Hussey Road Mini Farm Subdivision. We're, this is a new subdivision that has been for the planning commission and is recommending that a public hearing be set. So we're asking board to approve setting public hearing for the twenty-third.
Can we put both of those together?
That.
Are they prepared so we can put those together?
No, sir. One is to amend the subdivision ordinance and the other is to approve a subdivision that was submitted prior to July.
All I'm asking you, can we have those on the same day?
Oh, yes.
Same hour, that's, I'm not worried about it. I leave it at the end. Because I would probably not approve any of it, but anyway. I'd like a motion to set a public hearing, September twenty-third. A motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Dr. Spire. Everybody in favor of setting those public hearings, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent. That'll all. And so we can set those both on the same day. Where we, I mean, I don't see any reason why it comes twice. All right, move along.
Okay, the, the fourth, the fourth item under this section that we just added, Mr. Westbrook, is a request to change, change the public hearing to, from where it was tonight to the twenty-third. Or a general, special general development order, special exception for Happy Green Acres, R V Park, Flea Market. This is the property on Highway ninety, right before you get to the Washington County State Line on the south side. This would be the public hearing to be set in conjunction with the other public hearings on the twenty-third.
Just for a quick question, as my colleague says sometime.
So basically, we're asking for a basically set a public hearing for this development order.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have a, I guess for lack of a better way to describe it, a survey of the neighbors and the people in that area? Do you have those? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Kim, didn't they go through the same process as any other development order where they had to notify their adjacent landowners?
Yes, all the landowners within five hundred feet of this property received a notification. And we have had one neighbor to the west who has contacted us and submitted opposition to this. But none of the other property owners within five hundred feet have registered either approval or opposition.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Well, I'll offer a motion to, to set a public hearing for the Happy Green Acres, R V Park and Flea Market on September twenty-third.
Got a motion and a second by Mr. Branch to accept it. What's the board's pleasure? Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Everybody opposed, same sign. You voting okay, Mr. Dr. Spire? You okay with that? Okay, unanimous consent, move along.
Uh, Ms. Westbrook, the item number one under section four is the consent agenda. If there's any item in this A through E that the commission would like for me to discuss, be glad to do that.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay with it. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Grant Field to approve, are we approving A, B, and C or just A, B?
A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay, that's fine, all right. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Branch, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Moving on.
Uh, Ms. Westbrook, item number two under this section is a request for board to renewal of the Cypress Park Monitoring Well Site License Agreement with the state of Florida. This monitoring well is for the aquifer monitoring.
Asked this question when I went over this to Mr. Dean and, and of course, it's new, so he wasn't aware. I know that park's been there for a while, what, what is that monitoring well, monitoring? Is there, typically, that's an environmental fact thing.
Yeah, so the well's been there, the original well went in right when I was kind of taking over Parks and Rec, so eight or nine years. But they, they monitored the level of the aquifer in that area. They got several wells throughout the county, so they just monitored the depth of the.
It's not environmental, it's just basically measuring the.
That's right, no, no contamination or anything like that.
Thank you.
I repaired that well for you one time years ago, I think, somebody.
Well, that's not the portable well for the building, this one's separate.
Well, you do drill another one?
So there's two, yes, sir.
Okay, is it a high deep as if, you know?
A monitoring well?
Yeah.
No, sir, it was in before I got started.
Well, that's a, that's, that's a tough area right there, the reason I'm asking it, because you may drill a well there at a hundred feet, you may drill one at six or seven hundred. So, yeah, I can, I can show you some of those three, four, six hundred foot, right there within, well, within sight of it. But I mean, if it's a big producer, then it must be made into the.
There, there is a exhibit on the agreement, license agreement that shows the location on the property.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the Cypress Park Monitor, Monitor Well Site License Agreement with, and authorize you, Chairman, sign.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second on the monitor well. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along.
Uh, Ms. Westbrook, the next item is a request board approval of managed services contract for public safety radios and equipment. And I, I think that I'm going to ask Mr. Warren to explain what that means. I, I'm not a communications expert, so Mr. Warren, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So this is a request to use the county automation funds to pay for a managed service contract with M C A and Motorola. To basically maintain our public safety radios for, for the field responders. And also the equipment and the infrastructure on the tower site at the existing sheriff's office or the old sheriff's office. And then, once we build the new tower at the new sheriff's office, that same equipment that will be moved or purchased to put onto that new tower. As well as the ancillary repeaters and equipment that are on the Graceville Water Tower Site and the Sneads Water Tower Site. So this includes, for the field responder radios, includes all of Jackson County Sheriff's Office portable and mobile radios, as well as Jackson County Fire Rescue's portable and mobile radios. I think it's a, it's a great price for the service we get. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work and a lot of manpower. And I think the automation funds can support it year over year. It would be a reoccurring annual contract, so if we didn't want to renew it in a future year, then that would be our, our choice.
Is, is the price of fifty-eight thousand five oh seven, is that comparable to what it was last year?
We do not, yeah, this would be brand new, but we don't have a managed service contract. We have managed service contracts for every mission critical, public safety, communications, equipment, except for the field responders' radios and, and the radio equipment on those towers. So we have managed service contracts for nine-one-one, computer aided dispatch, the, the dispatch radio consoles, all that stuff is covered under service contracts with various vendors. However, our field responders' radios have never been covered under such a comprehensive plan before.
What kind of height, just curious, what kind of height does your, will your tower be?
The new tower?
Yes, yeah, the one we're talking about right here, I don't know if it's near enough.
It's, oh, it's, I believe it's three eighty, three ninety feet.
Pretty good.
Critical is this communication equipment is to the service providers. I would think that this would be a critical service that we want provided.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Offer a motion to approve the annual agreement.
Second motion, annual agreement, thinking about Mr. Branch. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent, move along.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item is board approval of agreement for public service for ambulance standby out at the Ag Center on Highway ninety. For an event that they're, they will be having, hosting out there on September the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, approximate hours are from five o'clock to seven o'clock in the evening. It's a typical agreement that the board approves and we're asking for board approval.
No, no motion. I have a motion by Mr. Grant Field. Have a second, just, okay, that's fine, you can, you break it out.
Just one night?
Yeah, just one night.
Charlie, is this an event where this service is required? Or is it just something that they are electing to have there for added security, added?
So through the ordinance, the federal ordinances and the rental agreement, facility rental agreement, depending on the nature of the event. Extra security, as the ordinance is written in a facility rental agreement, extra security annual emergency services shall be required. That's written in policies that were in the codes that were approved by the board.
And, and as a wrestling event, this would fall in that category, in your opinion, yes?
Yeah. I need, I still need that second, I got a, got a motion, if I can get that second, pick it back up.
I'll second.
Yeah. Thinking by Dr. Spire. Motion by Mr. Grant Field. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent, move along.
Uh, Ms. Westbrook, the next item is board approval of detailed work plan and annual certified budget for the mosquito program for Jackson County. The board has previously approved this budget and work plan before, but the state offered to give us additional dollars. Therefore, the health department has brought the agreement back to the board for approval because of the change in the dollar amount.
So this, the changes are just reflective of the additional dollars?
Yes, sir.
Just as a.
How many additional dollars is it on annual?
Two thousand one hundred and eight dollars.
How much?
The additional dollars is two thousand one hundred and eight dollars and seventy-one cent afforded to the health department.
You ever gonna move?
Okay, I want to ask a question or two before we get much further. Thank you all for coming. Nice to see you, glad you're here. We have a lot of people in this county with bees. We need to locate those things or ask you to locate them or whatever it takes, but we won't spray and kill their bees.
He manages the, the program with us.
Yeah, you'll see the man that's going, I was asking, later, it's probably going to do the work.
Right, yeah, that's right. Most beekeepers are on a state list. With the big state in Tallahassee. We tend to follow that, that, next thing we always ask every call we get, if they, if they know of any bees that's within a one mile area where they are. And if they tell us they are, we stay away from it, we don't go there. But most of them are on.
How long before you going to start?
We, we've already started, we've always done that.
Have you notified the bee people?
The beekeepers, yes, they know when we start.
Well, there was one at my place this morning and he did not tell me they started because I asked him that question.
As far as.
From Bristol.
As far as.
Mr. Kyle.
But he can, anybody can call us and let us know if they're not on the state list, most of them are though.
Well, what I would like to ask you to do would be to proactive on that.
Yes, sir.
And make contact with them, that's, that's a very good enterprise for around here, no. And they, they don't pay me because they paid me a long time ago with other things, but I, I just, I don't want to kill their bees.
Right, no, sir, no, sir, not at all.
I'm not at my, not me, not me making approval, let's kill a bee.
Right.
So.
Yes, sir.
If you can tend to that.
Well, yes, sir.
We, we just.
Can we maybe do a public service announcement through our website to basically ask any, any bee keepers, that if they're not on the state list, to contact the Department of Health and, and let them know?
Yes, sir, the same number that they call, that current citizens call to get spraying, when they, when they choose to have spraying, they can call and tell us that they do not want spraying in a particular area.
There again, but can we be proactive with?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, thank you very much, I agree with you, we want to amend it to, because that ended motion.
Yeah, just, we're just adding direct staff to, to put out a public service announcement, knowing, you know, letting any beekeepers that are not on that list, let us know that, let the Department of Health know that so that we won't spray.
Most, most of the, the people with the bee acres are from other counties, but they're in this county, own land, mine and others as well. So I just want to protect them, there again, that's agriculture, they won't have the, they might not be the same way that someone else was worried about, but I'm worried, I'm worried for them.
Sure. So, so I'm clear, Commissioner Donfro, you're directing your P I O to make that announcement?
Yes.
In our initial social media post that we did last month, just to let people know about the program, we did add a note that they are unable to spray within one mile of any known bee area.
Actually, last time we talked about this, ma'am.
We will expound upon that.
So, so long as we all are reading off the same page, I'll be happy as I can be.
Yes, sir.
What's the board's pleasure? I made a motion. Yep, you did, but I, I got to, I give a second. Okay. I, I.
Sir.
I got a second.
Well, hold on, hold on, I thought I made that one too.
We'll take a second. I'll, I'll.
And then discuss it, and then discuss it when elsewhere, so.
What I thought.
Did it, did it die for like a second or?
Yeah, well, we'll. No, I made a second. I did make a second, I knew I did something.
We all want to say.
Okay, all right.
All, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent, move along, thank you all very much, I just.
Thank you.
Want to take care of our people, you know, they, they a part of our economy too.
Thank you, we have added number five as well.
Yes, Ms. Westbrook, the next item is associated with the health department's review and approval of the core contract and the fee schedule. Now, I spoke to Ms. Martin today, and there are two changes in the fee schedule. One is a mailing fee associated with sending vital records to whoever requests them. It's an additional five dollars, it is a five dollar mailing fee which was not in the schedule before. And then the other fee, since the health department is responsible for inspecting group homes, they've never had a fee to charge for doing that inspection. So they've incorporated a fee for inspecting group home facilities in Jackson County.
Where, where is that included in the, in this handout? If, I had that. Oh, I see it, I see it, page one twenty-three, three and five, group care facilities, yeah, okay. So, and those are the only two changes to what was printed.
And the other one was on page one twenty, and it's the very, very bottom of the page, which is on there.
And with that being said, I'll offer a motion to approve the core contract and the fee schedule and authorize you, as Chairman, sign.
Second, got a second, Mr. Grant Field motion by Mr. Donfro. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item on the agenda is the request for approval of the twenty-five to twenty-six USDA Cooperative Service Agreement with Road and Bridge. This is to provide services with US, from USDA for the managing of wildlife such as beavers and wildhogs on county property when they become a nuisance. And we're asking board to approve the agreement.
If the increase is associated with the swine that we've been having to trap and move.
Go ahead, Mr. Dean.
It is, we actually decreased it for, so for this current fiscal year, we're around twenty thousand dollars, but we're moving to more of a monitoring than the active trapping. So we did reduce next year's money from what we've already spent this year with that in mind. So that will include the beaver and the wildhogs.
It looks like the trapping that they've done up to this point has been mostly effective.
Yes, sir, very much, and, and still reports weekly of more being removed, so they're, they're still working, but utilizing technology, they don't have to make the field visits that we're actually built on. Unless they actually have someone, something in the trap.
What's the board's pleasure? Any more questions? Make a motion to approve. Have a motion to approve, Mr. Grant Field, second. Mr. Donfro. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, unanimous consent, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item is board approval of a task order agreement with Alday Howell to provide construction, engineering, inspection services for the Ulysses Bridge project. Uh, this is, the, the services will be funded a hundred percent by the B Scott, the F D O T grant funds.
How, how long, out of curiosity, how long do we anticipate that project lasting, Jeffrey or Redd, I mean, is it, what's the contract length on that, is it a ninety day contract or?
I think ninety days is the statute of one twenty-five.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve it. That's great, the motion to approve. Second by Dr. Spire, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, unanimous consent, move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is request for board approval to award twenty-four, twenty-five, the oh-nine adaptation planning consult, to the planning consultant. This is the, this is a kind of an extinct, extension of the vulnerability assessment that was done for the county a year, approximately a year ago. Uh, and the vulnerability assessment was required by the state of Florida in order, as a part of the results of hurricane and sea level rise. And the vulnerability assessment identified potential areas where you could have problems with such as flooding. And this study or this award or the, the services that will be provided in conjunction with this will identify specific projects that will mitigate the areas that they identified as potential problem areas. And hopefully you understood what I said. But again, it is an extension of the vulnerability assessment where they will identify potential projects that mitigate areas that have been identified prone to flooding and things of that nature.
And also hopefully I.
You must have been speaking to me when you said.
They also potentially identify grant funding sources to, to potentially handle the.
I, I think that's a given as far as what, where the grant funds would come from in conjunction with identifying those projects.
And there were, there were two firms that applied, and the highest ranking firm was, was Dewberry.
Uh, Dewberry is who we would be awarding to.
Somebody.
Got him, motion by Mr. Grant Field, second by Brian to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand. I got it, though, didn't I?
Yeah.
You just whistle next time if you want to. Just give a whistle.
Yes.
Whistle.
All right. Move on.
Okay, next item, Mr. Westbrook, is a request board approval of purchase of fire and security alarm system and monitoring for the new tax collector's office. The, which is the old social security building off of Penn Avenue. This, the fire alarm, as you can see in your agenda book, is, was twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, the security alarm, twenty-five hundred. Of course, these are modifications that had to be made to the building in order to meet code requirements.
So that.
Already started.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, please.
It wasn't clear to me, the, the cost of the fire alarm and the security alarm, is that for testing or have they identified deficiencies in the system that are going to be corrected as part of this?
As I understand it, there's certain aspects that, in order to meet code, that have to be installed. And.
Additional device, because there's a fire alarm system in there.
But as far as strobe lights and other things, as so. But as far as strobe lights and other things associated with the, to meet the code requirements. Go ahead.
That's the gist of it. So what we found out was, since that was a federal building, they were exempt from certain local codes that our system now has to meet. So we're having to upgrade the facility to meet current building codes for City of Marana.
And I, I understand that, but I wondered why that we didn't know that when we began to talk about buying the building. A lot of talk, but we didn't know. And we need to figure out why we didn't know. We won't waste any money. Go ahead, Mr. Brant.
The, the current building there in, do they have any alarm systems there?
The tax collector's office over at the forehouse, the one I have driver's license.
I'm not aware. It's also exempt due to age. That facility's 100 years old roughly, 80 plus at least. Um, so it got bought without some of it, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to relocate employees out of it.
Got bought with some of it. Do we have, I, I just wondered about all the computers and stuff and information that's there.
That is not a monitored facility.
I, I guess my question would be, office buildings typically don't require fire alarm systems. That's a good idea to have it, I think. But I don't know that a fire alarm system in that facility is mandated. I don't know that it's not. Has that been looked at? Has it been determined that a fire alarm system is required for that facility?
This is coming from City of Marana Fire Inspector requirement, or recommendation.
Could we look back when we bought that building and, and the records, because I'm sure, I'm sure we had some, because we approved it right here. Could we, someone look back and see where they told us we didn't need anything ready yet? That I just want to remind the board if I remember what they said. And, uh, we need to be ready for stuff like that from this day forth. Because we, that, that we're, we're putting money there that really we don't have. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Well, the other thing I would say is, uh, on the amount of the funds to be expended or requested, it says 1,230, which is for the, uh, the monitoring cost. That should be, unless my math, math is bad, that should be 1,220. Correct?
Yes. Big DM.
It's just $10 off. You have the $60 you put on plus the semi-annual inspection fee of $300. It adds up to 720. That's true.
Yes, sir.
Was the security alarm not in the building already?
The Social Security team, it was inoperable when we received the building. There was not an existing system. However, they did have it when they were operating, but it was not left with us to, to be functional.
So would we be in order to notify the seller of that?
Of course, I mean, we can, but I mean.
I don't know if that was an understanding or an obligation on their end.
I would assume it was purchased as is.
Well, we paid a million dollars there. Uh, and really and truly, that's, that's pretty right. They scored a million dollars at one time. So if we're going to put $12,000 in it, and it wasn't one there to start with, then why would we not notify the seller?
I mean, we can do that, Mr. Westbrook. Be glad to do that.
I don't want to put you to a path that you didn't have things to win. I apologize, boss.
Uh-uh, no problem.
I would strongly suggest that we did that.
Can save a tooth, then? Can't save a tooth, then?
Yeah. You're right. I mean, I don't want to be a, a stick in the mud, but every dollar counts, baby.
And we would go back and, and get the sales agreement and review that as well, Westbrook.
Thank you. Can, we need to amend that right there, including that?
If you want to, you can, but I'm going, I will do that.
Okay. Well, if we, if it's a board's pleasure, we just amend it and not to, because we want to force somebody to do something, but we just want to make it known, you know, if that's all right. Would that be the pleasure of the board?
Okay, well.
At least I got one here.
So just to clarify what you're asking, is to table this until Jim talks to, do we talk to him and get an answer on that, or are we talking about?
Well, you.
Tax collector's office is, you know, anticipating moving in, and with the computer equipment that they're moving over there, I don't know that they would be able to meet the deadline of moving in that building without a, a security system and a fire alarm system. So we would be delaying that opening of that office.
Yeah, we, we behind the eight ball now then.
Yep.
Well, then I'll offer a motion that we approved, approved the agreement, authorize you to sign with the added caveat that we have direct staff, Mr. Dean, to approach the seller and see if we can get any of these dollars back. If we can, that's fine. If we can't, then we should move forward.
Yeah. Motion, second, to follow that motion right there, Mr. Square. Kind of extended, but if you got it, we thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent. Move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is a request for approval to go out for RFP for inspection services. The current agreement that we have now fires, we're asking that the board allow us to publish and go out for an RFP on inspection services.
And currently services are provided by EPCI, out of the city?
Yes.
Let's see.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
What specifically, what kind of inspection services do we have?
Like, uh, for residential and commercial buildings, those type of services, Mr.?
All right. Thank you.
And plan reviews are currently being done by the building department. So plans are being reviewed in-house. It's just the inspection services that we would potentially be engaging a, a company, a vendor to do. All, all a motion to proceed with the soliciting, uh, request for proposals.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Donfro, second, but, excuse me, Mr. Crutchfield, all in favor, raise your hand, right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent. Move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is a request board approval to amend the DEP grant agreement for the Shangerla. Basically, the, in talking with the grant coordinator, grant writer, grant physician, this, these changes deal with the way that the reimbursement tool we receive from the state. Uh, the prior language required that we wait till the project was 100% complete. Uh, the new language would allow us to invoice once we have paid the vendor or the contractor or whatever that may be. So we're asking board to allow, agree to the amendments to the grant agreement.
This is a grant program?
Yes, for the Shangerla.
So, so this is the current project, or is this a different project? This is the one where we built the observation deck and the floating?
Phase three.
This, this is?
The last phase to build the.
So this is the pavilion?
Yeah. The, the boardwalk itself is already closed out.
Okay.
Anything besides the perfume?
Sir.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Anything, we don't have anything else to it besides the perfume?
They'll have parking area, improved parking, and, um, we'll be putting Millings down on the trail connection coming back to Blue Springs where the footbridge connector comes up the hill and ties into the existing room.
So is the park, is parking going to be Millings or?
Yes.
And so if somebody were renting the pavilion, would they have to go, they'd go through the park and walk up, or will they be able to, I mean, they'll be able to drive from Blue Springs Highway?
Correct. Directly to the.
Directly to the pavilion.
That's right.
That, that's part of this project?
Well, we haven't ironed out the rental details, but the, the parking lot and the pavilion is part of this project.
And remind me, if we bid that, that project's been bid out?
It has.
And Monolith as well as the?
No, sir. Monolith was not. It was, uh, Blue CS. They're from other Florida. Southern Florida, top Florida.
But that was, that was a low bidder.
Correct.
Thank you.
You have the recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll offer a motion to approve the amendment. Authorize you as chairman to sign.
I'd kind of. Second.
Second.
You got a motion by Mr. Donfro, second by Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Unanimous consent. Move along.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item is an amendment to CDVG Grant Amendment Number Three, and this is associated with the Reuven HVAC system replacement on the county jail. Uh, the, this amendment actually just extends the agreement to 9/30/2026.
A year?
A, a year from now, yes.
You feel like, you go take that one?
It shouldn't take that long, but, um, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Daniels and everyone else that's been involved in this, this project, it has taken longer than it should at this point. But, uh, again, when you're extending these grant agreements, you don't want to extend it for three months, because you might wind up extending it again. So we're just doing the maximum amount allowed.
And how long have they been on it already? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm not sure when the original award was or when the construction, I believe it started in 2024, the construction.
We better keep up with that the next time.
But we haven't paid them all their money yet.
That's wonderful. That's what you do with a well done. Anyway, y'all heard the recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
The board's pleasure.
Motion by Mr. Brant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the, uh, next item is board approval amendment number three for the CDVG CV stands for COVID, uh, grant agreement that we have helped the Jackson Hospital. We facilitated a CDVG grant for them to make upgrades and modifications to their air conditioning system and air purification system. Uh, we're asking the board to approve an amendment which extends the, the grant agreement. And it also would be extended to September of 2026.
This is a project we really, again, just like you described, we, we allowed them to, uh, use our capability of applying for CDVG grant to, to get it. We've been, we've not really been involved in that project.
We, we have to administer and, uh.
We are.
We are administering. And, you know, the hospital was not, cannot apply for a CDVG. So the county is a facilitator for the CDVG because it is funds being used on public property.
They spent quite a bit of money.
Yes.
Already.
And there are, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, but there are additional COVID dollars in the CDVG at the state of Florida that we potentially will get our consultant to help us apply for to provide additional assistance to the hospital to make additional improvements.
That's a.
Very good idea. Go ahead, Doc.
Facility serves Jackson County well. I've used it many times. So, you know, lots of employees. So important that we help the Jackson Hospital maintain that facility to a top-notch condition.
I helped them get a big sum of money one time about 25 years ago, and they, they forgotten to say thank you.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the amendment and authorize you, as chairman, to sign.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. To approve, you've heard, already heard the recommendation. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Everybody that's not, say no or holler. What are you going to do? Unanimous consent. Thank you.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item on the agenda is a request for board approval of award, of, of award number 24, 25 dash 20, the Endeavor Museum Shell Reconstruction. Uh, if you remember, this went out on the street for bids back in June. Uh, bids were received. The bids that came in exceeded the amount of grant dollars that were available and the match that came from the TDC. Uh, it exceeded that amount. And so, uh, we met with the, our consultant and staff met with the contractor that was the low bidder and worked on some value engineering to get the price down within the amount of grant funds and match funds from TDC that are available, which is $808,410. And so now that we've value engineered to get the price down, uh, we're asking the board to approve awarding uh, this contract to Monolith.
Y'all heard the recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve.
We got a motion by Mr. Crutchfield to approve. Do I have a second question? Yes, sir. You recognize?
The museum, the old dining.
Mr.?
Sir.
I, I still have a problem with all of them. And, and Mr. Brant, again, it's, it is, uh, the state of Florida grant money, as well as the TDC money, of course, comes from that five cent bed tax, not from the citizens of Jackson County. Uh, so I, I understand, and you've expressed that to me a number of times. Uh, but I just wanted to, for the record, make sure that you understand that.
I do.
May I ask, Mr. Brant?
Yes, sir.
I didn't get the, your objection to it. Would you repeat what the?
I just don't want Jackson County to be portrayed in that building out there. And, and I know what I've been told is that they won't be. But how do you not, with everything that's been said and, and, I don't know if anything's been proven, but I just, I don't want Jackson County to be portrayed in a bad light. And I don't know if, I just, it's hard for me to vote for something that could be, you know, just, I think that, uh, that's a wrong thing.
Well, I, I think that we want more or less, what this grant is doing is just more or less preserving the building.
Yes.
So we could do something later with it. If not, the building going to go to burn.
It, uh, you're right, Mr. Crutchfield. This will, uh, improve the structure, uh, make it structurally sound, put a roof on it, and also put windows in it. And some of them we, there's not enough money to put windows everywhere. Uh, there's an opening, but it will do the bare minimum to keep it from further deteriorating and potentially just falling down and being another nuisance we have to clean up.
And it is, we got a grant to do that.
Yes.
You know, like say what little we got to do, bed tax, which is probably from outer county people's money, 90% anyway. So, I mean, it wasn't nobody in Jackson County probably want to stay in motel when you got a house.
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, I can't recognize it. Mr. Donfro, I wanted to ask you, what's your take? Go ahead.
Well, let me, first of all, say I need to recuse myself from voting on this issue because all front was engaged by David H. Melvin to provide plans, uh, for this. I will remind the board that we've already done the demolition on this building. So the, the roof has been removed, uh, the windows have been removed, doors have been removed. So the building basically is, uh, uh, nothing but a floor slab and exterior walls at this point in time. And I, I understand what Mr. Brant is saying, and I, and I agree with, uh, I, I, I tend to agree that we want to make sure that the story that's told there is a story, a positive story for Jackson County. And I think it can be. I guess my question would be, I know that there has been a business model established by somebody, that I've seen a rough draft copy of that. And I've gone through it, and Jim, you may, Mr. Dean, you may not have, uh, seen that as of yet. I've gone through that draft, and I, and I've got some questions and some serious concerns with it. Uh, that, that document has not come to, uh, this board, or I don't think it's come to the TDC for approval as of yet either, but I've seen it.
Like the museum document?
Yeah.
Yes, it, there has been, uh, a document that has been produced, and I believe the commissioners have seen the draft. I've seen a number of, uh, changes that I had asked be made.
And I guess my question would be is, at what point will we, will we as commissioners have an opportunity to, to have input into that? I know that the TDC, I'm a member of the TDC, so I've had some opportunity to, to express some of those to Kelsey. But, uh, I think this board needs an opportunity to, to be able to see that and, and provide input as well.
And I don't have an answer for you. I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I will get you an answer on that when, when that document will be brought before the board for final approval.
Well, when there's money spending to be. Well, when there's money spending to be done, I think we made most of all the decisions out there, so that would be a understatement, really.
But, but this, this will actually, as Commissioner Crutchfield said, will, will stabilize this building, put a roof on it, uh, put windows in most of the openings. Uh, I don't think it actually will pay for the doors and it'll do some of the structural remediation, uh, which will allow this building to be used in some capacity. Otherwise, uh, you know, that demolition, yeah, we might also just tear the building down.
Yeah, if it's not used for museum use for something, could be used for something else.
Yeah. Yeah, not, not, not saying that it shouldn't be used as a museum. I'm just saying we need to be careful with the, the story that's being told by it. Dr. Spire, you want?
Are we seeing that approximately thirty eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars? Um, was beyond what was allocated, therefore this is being taken from TDC funds, is that correct?
Yes.
In addition to three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, five eighty four twelve?
There, there is funds that will come from the TDC as well as the grant funds, yeah.
I understand that we keep saying that we, these are TDC dollars that it comes from towards development, people with families who are family. But that doesn't excuse us in terms of being frugal with the way that we spend the money. And we realize that other needs in Jackson County that I think are more pressing, my opinion.
Those TDC dollars, I'll remind the board, that can only be used for certain.
I understand that, but if we use for tourist development, uh, then we're going to go on building.
But uh, we listened to the lady just a few days ago, talk about where we was gonna spend a lot of it. But at the same time, my question was, are we counting, we going all over this county to do that? That money goes to this whole county and every district that's sitting up here on this board now. Uh, every one of our districts has some. But so, uh, I, I concur with what you say, Dr. Spire.
Yeah, and I think those dollars will be spent in every single aspect of the county and not ruled in one area.
I couldn't agree with you more. Uh, we, we already. Whether you, whether you agree with it or not.
Those dollars are being spent all over the county.
Well, but. With all, with all due respect, I, I, I trust your and respect your opinions of all that. But in the general public, all over this county. When you get down to Grand Ridge or Smead. When you get up there around Greenwood, ask them along. The first question, I, a lot of people's mouth, I'm not saying it's a valid question, but I'm just saying what they say to me is when you gonna spend any of that money up by around, uh, instead of all over around Marianna? And I understand that we have a viable place for tourists to come and all that, but at the same time, they, they question on that now. Also remember, I'm, you know, I'm one of the good old boys, so they don't mind asking me anything. They'll ask me and, and let her fly, but that's all right, that, that's why I'm here. And so, yes, that is a valid statement he's making, and I respect what you said just as well. But that's all I got to say.
And I, you know, and I agree with uh, what Mr. Spire said. But you know, again, you mentioned Greenwood, well, the TDC spent um, dollars, TDC dollars on the Great Oaks to secure that facility and to paint it. So I, we've spent money in Graceville, we spent a lot of money in Malone at the Pecan Festival. Uh, we've, we've placed money for events at Lake Seminole, uh, many fishing tournaments. I mean, those dollars do go around the county and probably we need to do a better job of, of getting that information out there.
And, and also with all due respect. If, if you, if you go to dividing those up and add them up and dividing them out, are they all about the same? I yell back.
Oh, good man.
Yes, sir.
Anytime compared to what we're putting out there.
Yes, oh, I couldn't agree with you more. Go ahead.
I, I, I know I keep bringing this up, but I have not seen what's gonna be there. I've been told, but I have not seen what's gonna be there. Uh, and the way things, I just left to see it from my own eyes.
Yes.
Before I could vote to spend that much money. It's like Mr. Spire said, I know it's, it's TDC money, but it's still Jackson County money.
Yes.
And.
Absolute.
I just, I just want to be sure before I vote for something that costs that much. What is gonna be?
Well. That's not a bad idea. I, I understand and he's, anybody else? Got anything?
Well, we just, again, remind the board this project's been bid out. Um, we've got a contractor that's ready to, ready to start and, and do that. The longer we wait, the more it may cost in the future. I don't know, I don't think a few days will last, uh, make that much of a difference, but uh, I think we're gonna need to make a decision on it pretty soon.
Well, yeah, and I, I respect that in your statement as well. But at the same time. It, it's just like buying a tank of gas or buying a bag of groceries. So you think about that sometime, I know that's not parlaying quite like, like it needs to be, but at the same time.
Oh, buy groceries.
Yeah, absolutely, look like I always want to buy groceries.
If you want to use that analogy, you skip out of gas, you probably stay home some.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Crutchfield.
Well, I know that money was probably way before my time was set for bed tack for TDC tourism. And I know like in Graceville and like over in Bascom, like you're talking about, if you got a facility, maybe, and it presented, they try to hunt a grant for it. You know, and, and you get five hundred thousand dollars. Man, I don't know, three hundred something thousand there to get it. Otherwise, you're gonna lose that five hundred thousand dollars. You know, I mean, a matching grant is better than later on, you pay a five hundred plus that, oh, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Westbrook.
From TDC money, so I mean.
Service.
I, I, to me, I think it's, if they got the money to do it, whether it's Bascom, Marianna, the building had to be here in Marianna. Whereas here, Graceville, whatever, I think you need to take advantage of, of the grant.
Well.
Because uh, you know, a matching grant means you ain't got to pay the whole hundred percent.
Yes, well, I think what it is, we're more concerned that we're spending money and we're all close on our budget. So that's where I think, I know, I already know all the arguments for it, and I accept that and understand it. With all due respect, though, it doesn't make it any easier. And you got members of this board that are not all from Bascom or Graceville, and I, and I respect that a hundred percent. But at the same time, it's just a challenge to spend a lot of money on something like that. I, I want to spend it too, I want it to be built.
Can TDC money be used for budget? Put on budget?
Uh, not unless.
So it's not taking anything away from budget money.
But my, my, my point, conditions like that, TDC funds can be used in a number of ways other than putting a building, I mean, a roof on a building. It can be used for youth development, you know, tournaments, whatever. And investing in children is far more important to me than putting a roof on a building that's semi dilapidated.
We, we, we do approve, a lot of times we've approved for different things around here or there. TDC has, has, has brought in and we approved for different things. You know, not just this building. I, I, I could see if we, if we weren't getting a grant to do that, but you're gonna turn that grant back, gonna make it harder to get another grant.
I can agree with you because we pick on one and we don't pick on the other one, and that basically what you're saying a lot. But it, it's just a, it's a challenge every day with that man right there and his death to make all this drive and make fun. He wanted to say something, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Westbrook, if, if I could, uh, remember this, this grant, which comes from the state of Florida, the five hundred thousand dollars, it does have a deadline on it that we can't change. So if we delay it a lot longer, we're, we're potentially will just lose the grant, period.
And did we not get some additional legislative appropriation for this project?
Parts of the, the project, the overall project.
Well, yeah, again, I get it to, to uh, respond to Commissioner Branch's concern. And again, I have some of those same concerns, but I think, you know, at this point in time, we're just trying to preserve the shell of that building. And there'll, there'll be ample opportunity, I think, in the future, uh, to uh, help chart the courses as to what goes on in that building. And this board is gonna have the final say as to uh, how that program gets developed in the future. And I have some of the same concerns that, that you do, and we want to make sure that uh, uh, you know, that it's a, it's a positive story that it tells. And uh, I think we have the, we have the opportunity to do that. And you know, we were, we were given that property out there to endeavor, uh, to redevelop it and uh, to uh, let it act as an anchor. And this is just one of those com- components. Uh, I think a museum, a, a Jackson County museum to celebrate the history of Jackson County. Uh, both our natural history and our, our, our history over the ages would be, would be something that would attract the visitors right off the interstate.
Have one question.
Well, go ahead.
If we accept this grant. Now, yep. If I'm understanding, this is to redo the, the roof.
The roof and there's some structural issues with the walls, those will be addressed so it doesn't fall down. And there will be some windows placed in the facility, the others will be boarded up.
But does that have to go toward that being a museum?
It just has to go towards that building.
Not, not necessarily toward a museum. So we could change.
Potentially you could.
Potentially what, what we're gonna do.
Yep.
Or is that gonna get us in trouble with the grant?
Yeah, you know, on the record, I mean, I'm just gonna say what the state would want me to say, and right now we have it planned to be a museum. But it, five years from now, uh, the board may decide to do something else.
Right.
Yeah, well, go ahead, Dr. Spire.
Are, are we saying that the state will allow these grant funds to be used to board up some windows and replace some?
Uh, it, we only, uh, Mr. Spires, as you see from this agenda, um, you know, this project came in at about close to a one point five mil, one, one million, one hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. And you know, the staff has really dug its heels in and said, we're not going to spend any more than what we have uh, available.
But excuse my ignorance, but wouldn't be the eyesore to have part of the building new windows and the other parts with boarded up windows?
Well, like Mr. uh, Donaferro said, I mean, we're, we're actually getting the roof on it and trying to make it structurally sound and putting, boarding up some of the windows and the uh, and the doorways and having some of the windows in. We, we are preserving the facility so that whatever it will be in the future, it, it won't be falling down, it will have a, a structure there.
But as far as you, it's just a preservation act, it's not really to, to have a museum there.
It, it's a historic preservation grant, as I understand.
It is historic preservation, and, and the boarding up of the windows, Dr. Spire, is just temporary.
Sometimes. You have to hide your head and hold your nose to vote for things. They're not, they're, they're not the most popular, and certainly that is not either. Now, I understand about receiving five hundred thousand dollars from the state, and that would be the, the point that would bear hardest with me. But I'd also say at the same time, why we can't get to a position, I'm not saying about that. I'm not saying about what anybody's done. If we could get to a position where we could start that a lot earlier, so we would have time to think about it, study on it, whatever you want to call it, whatever the term would be up at Bascom School. But anyway, that's what I say. So that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my nose and I'm gonna vote for that. Not that I really want to, but I'm gonna hold my nose and do it. So here we are.
If, if we can have a say so of what goes into that building. If it has to be run through here. And let everybody vote on it. And if everybody votes for this or that, I'm good with that. But I. I don't want us to do that and then come up here and be embarrassed with what goes in.
You got a good point. Anybody that go ahead and.
Oh. My understanding is, I mean, we have control over what goes in there. If we want to pursue the museum, then that's the way to go. If not, if something comes in, you know, you know, where somebody, some bidding or somebody come in here and want to finish it out, and we could lease it to them or sell it to them or whatever, get all that money back.
Yep.
But if you let it go, then it rots down. Particularly with the roof leaking and all, it's gonna be, be the, the minute. I mean, the roof's bulldozed out.
Yeah, the roof in there, fifty, sixty, eighty years, I'm sure. Do we, do we have other buildings out there in our possession?
That's in the process of robbing and gunning.
That are deteriorated and, and dilapidated today?
I'm from, from the town.
So it's not gonna be an ongoing endeavor then, is that correct? At least you, I don't know, like endeavor, but it's gonna be an ongoing saga.
You know, the, the board, we take direction from the board. And you know, if the board says, you know, we're not doing another building, then we won't do another build.
But all I'm saying, we could exhaust the TDC fund and still not eliminate all those buildings that are dilapidated.
Well, and, and to answer your question, Dr. Spires, um, you know, the, of course, the old gymnasium has been, and, and I'm talking about on the, the part of endeavor on this side of the, when I say on this side, I'm gonna call it the east side. I don't know if that's the east side or the south side, but the same side as the gymnasium is on. Uh, three of the six cottages, four of the six cottages are now under, under renovation. Uh, there's talk about selling the church to uh, potentially prong.
The board did approve the.
The settlement, that's right. The gymnasium has been, has been renovated and turned into a convention center. Uh, we've put a roof on the old warehouse building, uh, which is the old warehouse building. We did that sometime ago. Um, uh, the uh, the, the J-Job facility is being used by the sheriff currently. Um, so I think on, on this side of the campus, most of those buildings are in pretty good shape and other than the last, I guess, two cottages.
Well, the, the, whatever that was, the health, health, or health building, the.
Old memory.
The primary, that's right.
General clinic there, there.
Yes, sir.
And we actually received bids, I think, or proposals on putting a roof on that building to, again, stabilize it, at least uh, uh, try to uh, uh, deter the continued deterioration of it.
The level ten building has been there about twenty five years. It was the last building that put that, they called it level ten, that's where the sheriff's office is, where you talk. It's pretty well built. Uh, it was funded in ninety seven, ninety eight legislature. And uh, and fund, and the appropriation to pay the people to run it or work there. Other, that usually one don't get the other, but at that time it did. So there again, I'm gonna hold my nose and vote. What's, what's the board's plan?
I made a motion, but neither second.
Mr. Crutchfield's got a motion.
That's correct.
But no second.
I don't have a second. Y'all help me keep up with it, don't bother me. Well, not one bit.
Yes, as I stated, I can't.
Yeah, okay.
I have to recuse myself from this, uh, this particular issue.
But the understanding that we will approve what goes in there. I'll say.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
No.
All right, we got two noes, three yes, so it passes three, the one with one abstention. Move along.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook, the next item is a request for approval of a change order number two for the Indian Springs Water Base Two. This change order incorporates the installation of a, a automatic transfer switch at well number one, I believe, and also adds an additional one hundred and eleven days to the project. This is the water project, not the sewer.
Uh, uh, automatic, what was that you said you were buying?
Transfer switch at well number one. When the lose power, it automatically switches over to backup power.
Okay, that's, that's, yeah, that, that would go. Is the one there bad?
Mr. Dan. It is bad.
Yeah.
That's grant funded.
And that is part of, it's part of SRF money, which is basically fifty percent uh, grant, fifty percent low interest loan.
Well, I reckon I'll have to hold my nose again, but anyway, what's the board's plan?
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that. A motion and a second to approve the automatic transfer switch. I just hope it lasts a long time. All in favor, right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move along.
Mr. Westbrook, the final item on the agenda is the, uh, grant agreement for our recycling facility. This is an annual grant that is, uh, provided by the state of Florida. We're asking the board to approve those funds are used for salaries and benefits primarily, uh, for our recycling facility.
I heard it. Recommendation, what's the board's pledge?
Second.
Now, a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same sign. That winds the clock. At least we got somebody that wants to speak. You want to speak, Mr. Davis? Okay. You can do it three or four minutes, okay?
Okay. I am up here to talk about my favorite subject again, which is the insurance.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering, for fifty-plus years, from what I understand, they've had a contract there. And how it rolled over and all that happened, I don't know. But let's put the sins of the past away. Let's start fresh this time. Okay, that's, so whatever happened, happened. You can't fix it. You're not going to go back. Nothing's going to go away. In our economy right now, pardon me?
The train's moving forward, not back.
Yeah, it is. It needs to. And in our economy, in the way things are, why wouldn't any of you want to save our taxpayer money by bidding the contract? I don't understand that. It's beyond me. So if we go past this and just move forward with a new contract to start clean, you know, and I heard somebody said that they're gonna, that Mr. Milton wants to drop the rates and stuff. Well, that's great. Bid it out and do it. So, because otherwise you're going back to the sins of the past again. We're just rolling it over again. So I think it's really, really time that we look forward and quit looking backwards.
Yeah, if I understand it correctly, and Mr. Dean straightened me out and I'm wrong, because I, they, they could be. It's, it's, it's not, the other insurance is not, uh, I mean, due as, as of today or tomorrow or whatever.
The, uh.
The current contract.
Yeah, Mr. Saber's referring to the property and casualty, uh, workers comp insurance. Uh, it is a annual insurance contract that, uh, the current one expires September the thirtieth and the new one begins October the first, so a couple of three weeks away.
No reason not to bid it.
Well, I was confused. I thought it was later, but that's okay.
Yeah, if your fiscal end, your ends, you know, at the, at the month.
If, if, uh, Mr. Dean could clear something up for me. And everybody here knows I was a little bit ahead, but, uh.
Me too.
What about the, isn't there a ninety-day thing?
Uh, there, there is, uh, in the agreement with the Florida Association of Counties, there is a time period where if we're going to bid out the, uh, insurance, then we, uh, should, should provide notification to the Florida Association of Counties. If that's what you're referring to.
So we could have done that the first time we brought it up, we'd have had time. Thank you.
To provide notification.
That's what I'm taking. What happens if you don't?
Um, purely, purely speculation. I mean, I don't know, uh, the, if, that the Florida Association of Counties would try to enforce that. But again, that's purely speculation. I, I have not asked them that question.
I, I have a question. If you've got, if, can I? Florida Association of Counties. I'm, I'm very familiar with them and I've had dealings with them a lot and that, but. What do they do for us that helps us?
Um, and I, I'll ask, uh, anybody else that wants to, uh, help answer that question. But, you know, they are a, they do provide a, uh, consulting services whenever we have, uh, potential litigation, they will, uh, we can call them and they will provide feedback. If we have, uh, a insurance, potential insurance claim, uh, like a liability claim, you can call them and they will provide feedback. They also have a, a on-call attorney, for lack of a better way to say it, that because we're members, they provide a, a service, uh, to respond to other things.
Have we got help from them in the last few years?
A- as it relates to that, yes. And they also provide training, Mr. Westbrook. They bring an attorney from somewhere else.
I'm very familiar with them. I was their legislator here one year. One, that, that, a dollar, get a cocoa machine where you stuck. But same time, I just, you know, when we start dealing with people like that, if they have any kind of overbearing ability, sometimes they want to use that. So I would just want you to know where we, where we were, were at this time or where we're going to be soon. So that's why I haven't been.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you there.
We all, I will say real quickly that, uh, and I think everybody got the, the information that, uh, our, our insurance vendor was able to negotiate a fairly significant discount on our premiums for next year.
That's what the man just mentioned. Well, that's nice to know. As, as much as, uh, we need to be conservative with money here, that's a, that's a very good start.
I think it was about two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Westbrook, we did have a, another, uh, person sign up, Mr. Miss Sally Baptiste.
Yes, ma'am. Come right on.
Well, I'm back again. Um, just to, uh, 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 agree that the request for proposal, we should be bidding for the insurance. It's the responsible thing to do, uh, with the people's money. So I'm just going to stress that I still support that that should be done. I don't think the way it's been handled has been correct. I mean, you may end up with the same carrier, I don't know, but, uh, I think you ought to be asking the question and, uh, taking a look at the money. It is our money kind of thing, so, uh, we're going to, um, hope you will continue to do that. Uh, the other thing, as I was talking to you last time, couple of times, I mentioned the, um, Live Local Act. And I promise this will be the last thing I hand you for the next couple of meetings. Won't guarantee much after that. Uh, this was just an example of what happened down in St. Pete, um, where the developers wanted to do something. And if the commissioners did not go along with it and approve their plan, they were going to use Live Local Act to go and change and do a lot of other things. So they were threatening or holding the commission hostage because of Live Local. So we need to get people involved to know what this is and we need to get out of it. Other counties, believe it or not, some of these central Florida counties, which I would have thought we would have been jumping into this, have actually rejected it and opted out. So we don't have to be a part of it. And I think we need to have another look at it, take a, and, and reach the public, uh, have some kind of a town hall or something because, because most people aren't aware of what this is. And the first couple of times when I was here talking, I really didn't get much feedback from y'all either at this point. So I'm curious as to, have you taken some time to look at? I know you did, you had started looking at it. And what's your opinion is of why you would think it's a good thing, because I don't, because it's taking away rights of local government. There's a whole list of things. I don't, I don't want to, uh, spend too much time on that right now, but, um, I would like to see some kind of a town hall or something to educate people and revisit that we should not be part of this. I mean, I, I've got plenty of stuff here if you want me to go over it, but I, I'm sure everybody's wanting to get out of here. So I'll cut down on the list of all the things it takes away from local government that you don't have the right to make the decision on. Because there's a lot of it and it's just the wrong thing to do. And I really thought this was interesting when, um, the, uh, threatened to, uh, to develop using Live Local Act if commi- commission votes against their plans. This was in St. Pete. That's not acceptable. Um, you shouldn't be held hostage. Now, of course, this is down in St. Pete, a little bit different environment. Uh, but that's not to say it's not going to happen here and it could be happening now for all I know. So please look at that again. Uh, one other thing that, excuse me, came up as you were talking about Jackson County Hospital. Um, you may remember, I sent you an email back in March, uh, of this year. And, um, at the time, the response had been, it's a private hospital and you, there were no control here. And I did do some research and found that there was some state funding. But obviously, based on what we heard today, there's also, um, funding grants being, public money being given to this hospital. And my problem back then, if you may or may not recall, and I can resend those emails if needed, is that you cannot reach the emergency room of this hospital, uh, in off hours. I had a friend who had been taken to the hospital late at night, early morning. I could not reach that emergency room. I had to wait until eight o'clock in the morning to get hold of somebody in that hospital. And I also had terrible service from, um, Jackson County Sheriff's Office because they couldn't get hold of anybody at the, at the emergency room either. Isn't that pretty sick? Your sheriff's department can't get hold of the emergency room at your hospital? They couldn't. And they got annoyed with me and I think they were almost going to threaten to, uh, charge me with something, I don't know. Because I'm calling this thing, I'm trying to get hold, a friend of mine was just taken, uh, to the emergency room, to this hospital, which I'm trying to reach the hospital and nobody is answering. Is there nobody there now? Do they truly not answer the phone after hours? An emergency room? It was crazy. And the, uh, sheriff's department wasn't real happy with me either. But there's something sick. Uh, so if, if our money is going to this, do you think we can make sure somebody answers the phone? The emergency room phone? I mean, I wasn't just calling to say hi to somebody. I wasn't calling their admin office. I was calling their emergency room and no one answered. That's pretty sick. And if you go back, you'll see the email I sent you with quite a bit of the details. So please think twice about giving money to Jackson County Hospital.
Well, the hospital is served us for a long time, so we kind of, all of us locals, we take it for granted in a lot of ways. And I've been there late at night with someone, but it's been a long time. I've been in there myself, just like Commissioner Donifor, and I'm sure two or three more of them, maybe not all of them. But it is a concern for me too, if that is not open. And, and I think that in, in time, we may be inquiry and ask and what the hours, post the hour, something like that. But anyway, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, in fact, I would encourage anybody here, anybody listening, anybody here, just do your own test. Call that emergency room in the off hours and see what happens. See if they answer. Now, if someone tried to tell me, oh, no, that was a mistake, whatever else, it happened too many times. And especially after calling the sheriff's office. And the sheriff's office doesn't have any way to get hold of anybody at that hospital. That is just something, something seriously wrong there.
We've had the same thing with the power company, the local power company. Where you call them and you lay the phone down and leave it, go somewhere for three or four hours and you come back and you'll still be ringing. So, yes, ma'am, we, I see that, but not at the hospital, I.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If, if. Go ahead.
Be interested to see if you went there and see if they could go in. You know, I know they probably, maybe short staff. I mean, there should be somebody answering the phone or something, you would think. But, you know, uh, like even if ambulance is on the way, they're going to be talking to the hospital.
Well, somebody was there at the hospital someplace, yeah. Because I, I, a friend of mine had gone to the emergency room, so I knew they were, had, I, they were, had the ambulance. And so I was calling to find out what, how he was doing.
Oh.
And I could not get hold of anybody. And, and, um, I didn't drive over and I probably should have, you know, but it was like, like I say, I think two or three o'clock in the morning. And so I didn't drive over there because who knows, I could have driven over and then maybe been locked out of the emergency room, who knows?
Yeah, it's like, if you couldn't get in, you couldn't, somebody really needed to see.
They, truthfully, they could have had the door locked and only because of the, um, ambulance, uh, that they, they, what, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
He didn't get out.
All due respect, I think we have a local person that is the, is the CEO of the hospital right now. And might, might make it a lot better. I mean, I could be wrong. We could have more than one that's been local. Am I right, West Donifor? But, uh, we all know the people there and a lot of local people. But that is a concern and I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, I'm not running from what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, I just challenge you to, in some off hour, give a call and see if you can answer, see what happens, see if you had the same problem. And anytime the CEO over there wants to talk to me, I'll be more than welcome. I mean, we're willing to go meet with them.
Uh, I don't know how other hospitals do, maybe similar to the same problem. But usually probably if you call, you know, and then after hours the office are closed, you would think somebody would be on, pick up the phone or something on call, but they're busy. I mean, that might be the reason, I don't know, you know, but.
Well, I mean, I, if, if I had only called once, I said, well, I called once and they didn't answer. I was calling and calling and calling and I called the sheriff's office. You mean, tell me, Sheriff, you don't have access to the only emergency room you have in this county?
Yeah.
Uh, you don't, there's just some, that was what I saw from the sheriff. Of course, I'm, people that know me don't, no, I'm not exactly a big fan of Jackson County Sheriff for a variety of reasons, but.
That'd be a good question to ask Mr. Brunner, because he, 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 around the ambulance, what happens if they, you know, have, uh, some accident and they had to get to the hospital, you know, if they have any problems, you know?
But the Brunner already flipped out on that.
Yeah, he asked that. But it is, I wouldn't have.
I, I've got a comment, uh, talking about this Live Local Act.
Uh huh.
I see where several of the, uh, municipalities that are being faced with some of these situations are looking to pass ordinances, uh, to combat this. Um, I guess my comment would be, I know we don't have developers knocking down our doors to build high rises here in Jackson County, but could we go through, uh, uh, the Florida Association of Counties to find out what type of ordinances uh, are being considered, uh, to combat, uh, uh, this situation?
That's a good idea.
Absolutely. Again, I know it's not, not anything that's going to be facing us in the near future, but, uh, you never know.
It creeps up and especially if they think it's easy money with all the tax breaks they get and that they get to just bypass a lot of the rules. And the, I, I mean, literally, they have, would have the right to go and build a high-rise, um, apartment or whatever, affordable housing apartments next to my house if they wanted to do it. They would be able to bypass a lot of the rules. So, yeah, that would be great. I would appreciate that. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. Anybody on this board got something else they want to say, administrator? Anybody anywhere?
Well. Mrs. Lodge.